Malia Collins.
Ed Dobson.
Thank you, Ed. And I'm going to ask you to mute yourself again if you're on mute. It's echoing. Okay, then, Town Council?
Luann Hook.
And happy birthday, Luann.
Thank you.
And then I want to recognize Erin.
Erin Nelson, serving as Town Manager.
Thank you. And then welcome to all of our guests as well. Ed, would you mind muting one more time?
Sorry, what?
Would you mind muting your phone?
What's up? Why me?
Because when we're speaking, it's echoing on your phone. It's going to echo onto your line.
Huh. That's news. Never heard that before, did I?
No, it's new. Would you like me to mute you? Let's see. I think that's better. All right. Let's start with approval of meeting minutes from the last meeting on March 15th. Let me go ahead. Oh, February 15th. Thank you, Marcia. Let me go ahead and share my screen. And a huge thanks to Marcia for the last minute during that meeting. Can everybody see that? It looks like Marcia had a...
It was basically a typo. It said 2/2022. It should say 2/1/2023. I didn't catch the 3 until just now. Kathleen's living in a past life, so her minutes have the wrong year. Anyway, 2/1/2023, under the words "approval of minutes from."
Okay, sounds good. Scrolling down.
Hold up just a second. Let me just, I didn't get a chance to read mine. Update just to the last regret. Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Keep scrolling down, seeing if there's other comments. Melissa, do you have a comment?
Yeah, things. I just highlighted that. I'm not sure that I previously suggested that. I don't know. Y'all can correct me if that's right or not. But I remember talking about that in that meeting, but I may have previously also suggested that. I hope it matters if it's a technicality or a semantic.
I would agree with you, Melissa, that it should say, "Eggy suggested that."
We just removed "previously."
That's what I think so. I don't think it...
Yeah, I just meant "previously during that meeting." I kind of moved it down into the other part of the discussion, but that works.
Oh.
Yeah, just get rid of "previously," yeah.
Just strike that. Okay. Any other changes to the meeting minutes from February 15th?
I would move for approval of the minutes as corrected.
All second.
Great. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes, say aye.
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 Ed, would you like to vote? Sorry, you might be muted again. Not hearing from Ed.
It's star six. Remind him how, I think it's star six, isn't it, to unmute? On a phone.
Star six. Well, for now, we'll...
How's that?
There you go. What is your vote on the minute approval, Ed?
Aye.
And I will abstain. That motion passes with four ayes, one against. Thanks, everybody. I will stop sharing that screen.
When I mute myself, does that help?
It does, yes. Okay. Now we'll now move on to the section of the agenda for public citizens to share a public comment of up to three minutes in length. If anybody would like to do so, please raise your hand or say so. And I'm going to ask you to mute.
I was already muted when you said that.
Should I...
So when I mute, it doesn't do anything, right?
I guess, but you were muted earlier, weren't you?
Okay, I'm going to mute myself again right now.
Okay, let's try it.
I did. Now I'm back. Did it help?
It never muted.
It didn't? Okay, I'll try again.
Yeah, you're still on.
Let me see if I can unmute you, what it does.
Okay, I'm back now. I was hollering while I was muted. You couldn't hear me?
No, we couldn't hear you, but...
Hear you, but it was still...
And now the echo's gone, though.
I guess because I just muted him.
Oh, okay. So you can still unmute yourself even if you're muted by the leader. So if you want to say something, you can unmute. But yeah, that takes, there's a huge echo when you're on.
Sorry about that, Ed. Okay. Would anybody like to share a public comment? Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll close tonight's Public Citizens to Be Heard section of the agenda. We'll move on to Old Business. Number one is an update from Town Council. Luann, I'll pass it over to you.
Okay, so we've just had one meeting, and that was February 21st since you all last met. And it's not a lot that applies to you, but I'll just give you a brief update. We had one topic, it was out at the airport, and that is a BLM lease, that the town has a lease with the BLM. There's been a hangar that's been abandoned out there, and that finally resolved itself. He has till March 31st to remove it. But I thought you would like to just know that that is BLM for now. The town has goals to have it town property, but right now it's BLM. The Design Review Committee, which is the co-op corner, the co-op over there, the old school, the CCC, they did not have any support. Dudley asked them if they could house some stray dogs on the north side of the separate buildings, and that did not go over at all with the design review. So it didn't come to the council that was sort of just bumped off of that because there was no support there. They are still working on the fire suppression grants, and there's, you know, a couple of them are real close, getting closer to be able to put bids out. They also had a request from Debbie Westfall and Tina from the BCHPA, Bluff City Historic Preservation Association, to put a trailhead marker there in the rideaway of the building so that people could cross over to the east access to the Bluff River Trail. And they didn't feel like they were ready to do that yet. And mentioned passing it back to the active transportation people. So anyway, that's still in limbo. There was, Anne Lepenin, she reported that Joe Hubbard's hired Bob Springmeyer to do a housing feasibility study for Bluff. So I don't know any more than that, other than that was a report on our meeting. And then BLM, as that BLM-Sitla exchange, we did send, voted to send a letter to encourage them to keep the BLM land in town, which you probably all have been up to date on all of that, but that was on our last meeting. And then, oh, and then we also, well, we as in the council, I voted against it because I thought it was premature, but voted to put out a bid for somebody to do our dark sky designation application. So we just, anyway, moved ahead on that. She contacted Dr. Barantin, and then Erin pointed out that we do need to have bids go out for that kind of price. And so that will be the next step, is to put out some bids. But that seemed to be the consensus, is to jump ahead and do that. And that was all I had. It was kind of a quick look back through my notes, but any questions or Erin, any additions?
Let's go to Marcia.
I just have a quick clarification, Luann. You mentioned that Joe Hubbard, meaning the mission, hired Bob Springmeyer for a project. Did he hire him with mission money, city money?
No, it wasn't town money. It wasn't town. She just reported that she had talked to him and that he had gone forward with a housing feasibility study.
Okay, so it doesn't have to do with the town?
No, just it was a report on our thing, and I thought you would be interested since it is planning and zoning and housing.
Yeah, that was my only clarification as well. The town is not involved in that at this point in time.
Great. Any other questions or thoughts for Town Council? Okay, let's move on to item two, which is invitation to the Active Transportation Planning Workshop. So for planning and zoning folks, and I believe the public, the Active Transportation Planning Committee is partnering with Town of Bluff and Bike Utah to do this transportation planning in town for pedestrian, bicycle, non-motorized use through town. And they're having a workshop on March 24th, that's a Saturday, from 12 to 2 at the community center.
The dates are, you're right on the workshops, but the dates, the 23rd is a Thursday that'll be at the elementary school, and the 24th is the date of the ones out on Friday at the community center. That'll be for the organizations and the government officials, UDOT types, and then a separate one for community members. The community members is 4 to 6, and the government officials, organizations is 12 to 2.
Okay, thank you, Luann. So Planning and Zoning was invited to the Government Officials' one on the 24th from 12 to 2. And so we'd like to have somebody from Planning and Zoning there. I thought I couldn't because it was Saturday, but I might be able to go. Is anybody available to go on that Friday, the 24th from 12 to 2?
I think that I should be able to.
And it's also going to be available as a hybrid. Craig's going to be available to do it both ways. We're trying to figure out exactly how to manage that, how to organize it, but that's going to be an option, too.
So, Malia, I will tend to the RSVP for you and potentially me to attend that meeting. Great, okay. Oh, go ahead, Melissa.
Just curious, at that meeting, are we just like hoping to have Planning and Zoning representation there? Or is there something more specific that we need to be prepared for? If so, I'd consider it, but just, it sounds like we have good representation, but just as a contingency plan, perhaps?
Let me open up the invitation. It's just for input and participation at this point in time, to discuss enhancing the livability of our communities, offering options for recreation and transportation, meeting safety and health objectives, contributing to economic development and community promotion, building partnerships, becoming a launchpad for larger projects. I can put that in the chat. I think it's just input. Melissa, if you'd like to come too, as Planning and Zoning, let us know. We can only have two, so then I can step back, vice versa.
I am also happy to step back.
I'm not trying to own that one. I was just trying to be helpful and available. I think I'll be around that day. I think so. Anyway, I trust y'all. You're great. If something comes up, though, you can consider me your replacement or something.
Cool, thanks. Luann, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, it's, the whole point of these workshops is to get as much public input and as many ideas to Bike Utah, and they're going to do the active transportation plan. So even if you don't come as the Planning and Zoning, if you come as a resident or whatever, the more people that come and the more voices that are heard is what they're looking for. No, the one with the government officials will be like our local organizations, our Friends of Cedar Mesa types. And then there'll also be the mayors. We've invited blending and Monticello mayors, the chapter, House representatives. Are they presidents of their chapter? I don't know. Yeah, so anyway, hopefully they'll come, the county economic person will come. That's that group. So it's, and then the residents is a separate one. But hopefully, hopefully you all be represented and be able to report back. So thank you.
Thanks. Erin, were you going to ask them? Go ahead.
For the one from 12 to 2 for government officials, I'm intending to ask the council to post that as a regular, or not a regular scheduled meeting, but as a work session, because the likelihood of having a quorum is high. So I wouldn't worry so much about limiting it to just two. And then for the resident one, I think it's possible that we could post it as well. And that one would maybe more be of, you know, the chance meeting, but definitely the 12 to 2, don't worry about that quorum issue.
Okay, thank you, Erin. Anything else on that agenda item? Okay, let's move on to item three of Old Business, shared documents. Erin, do you have an update for us on that process?
Yeah, no, I have no update. I would recommend keep using Google Docs for now. And if I determine that at any point in time our new shared system is any better, I will let you know. But no, it's terrible, so do what you're doing.
Got it, thanks. Okay, any questions on that? Okay, item four, I put this on the agenda again, physically posting Planning and Zoning minutes. I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting to be able to discuss this issue that came up, which is, yeah, by strictly reading the law, we do not need to post our minutes from meetings. However, I talked to the mayor about it, and there's a, like, generally a need for the Town of Bluff to have our minutes be very accessible to people, and some people don't have, may not have access to internet in the town. And so that's why the Town Council posts their minutes every month. So I wanted to see how the Planning and Zoning Commission felt about posting our minutes, be it draft or approved minutes, physically when we post the agenda as well. Marcia, go ahead.
A couple of questions for clarification. Where does the town post their minutes? And do they post draft or final?
Maybe Luann or Erin could answer that for us?
So the locations that get posted, and sorry, Ed should answer as well. The locations that we post...
No, I'm talking about minutes, not...
Oh, just minutes. Minutes get posted at the community center, at the outside board at the post office, not the inside board, and at KNC.
The minutes in all three? And do you post the approved or the draft?
You know, I don't, I don't actually know the answer to that one. My guess is they post both. That is my best guess. 90%.
Okay, the next question I have is, do you in fact have the key to the outside post office box in which the town posts their minutes, et cetera?
It's not locked.
That's the secret, okay. The reason I'm bringing all this up is because, and this is going back to my days as clerk for the service area. And for the service area, and this is a long time ago, so I won't talk about it legally because I don't know what the law is, although Amanda just said we didn't legally have to. But back in the day, it was you had to post the agendas so that everybody knew the meetings were coming. And then there was no need to physically post minutes. However, there were people in town who requested that we do, and that's where that came from. So I'm leaning towards what Amanda was saying about there are some people who just can't get to the minutes, you know, easily through the cyberspace and therefore like them posted. What I would like to do is make it as streamlined as possible. Ed posts the agenda in the proper places as determined, which is great. But I think, in my opinion, the minutes should just be in one place. I think it's the post office official outdoor bulletin board that the service area paid to put that up because it needed an official site, and that's why it was locked, and that's why it was only that site. And if we took one half of the board and said to our town manager, "Hey, that one side should just be planning and zoning" or whatever, then you'd have agendas going there every time and approved, in my opinion, minutes each time. That's my answer.
Another possibility for streamlining it is that when Ed posts the agendas on the Tuesday before the meeting, that he posts the draft minutes at that point in time. And so then he's...
The draft minutes that we're about to approve from that last minute. However, isn't it, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm just thinking, Amanda, that typically they, yeah, they wouldn't see it till it was approved anyway. Huh, okay, keep going.
I think maybe the best practice would be to mirror what the town is doing. So maybe I could follow up with Anne and see exactly whether they're posting the draft, the approved minutes, both and where, and then we can replicate that process. Ed, would you be up for that? And sorry if you're having trouble unmuting.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, first thing I think we need to consider is that at the outside posting at the post office, half of the facility belongs to the waterworks. The other half, the towns postings usually fill it up. So I have been posting the agenda by taping it on the outside, trying not to block anything. The minutes, if you want them up there, we'll figure it out.
Okay, well, let's, I will follow up with Anne and Erin about what practices we can replicate, and then talk about the space. Thanks, thanks, Ed.
I feel like I see as the draft minutes that are usually posted. I'm like 90% sure, but we'll still check. I agree with that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I kind of don't want all my mistakes posted. It's going to mislead the public in any way, and then we change it later.
But they'll say draft, and you do an amazing job.
Kathleen, we legally have to be able to show draft minutes. And I already post your draft minutes on the public meeting website. The difference is, however, Kathleen, you don't have typo correction in your Word program. So I often do change your...
Date.
Yeah, and just any little, the simple typos where you hit the wrong letter. Those are the ones that I change before I post. But legally, draft minutes go out to the public, even if the information is incorrect.
Yeah, 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 that's not fair. I mean, not to me, but the public, you know, may not process that. Okay, I get it, though. I'm good.
Okay, okay. So maybe then the rest of this is, when Kathleen sends me the draft minutes, and I take a minute to fix the regular typos that we all have in our normal typing, when I help her do that, that's the draft minute that would go out. It doesn't have any corrections of fact. It merely has the typos fixed for a minute. And it's not like there's tons or anything. There's just like one or two, and I get them, so.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
That's good. Okay. Well, thanks, everybody. I will follow up via email with the final decision. So next on the agenda, go on to New Business, Land Use Clearances. Just noting that we did not have any land use clearances come in unless somebody has heard otherwise. Okay, good. I will move on then to item six on the agenda. A request from the Bluff Town Council for a letter from Planning and Zoning in opposition to the proposed land exchange between Sitla and BLM. I had Anne Lepenin's, Mayor Lepenin's name next to this. Would somebody else like to speak to that, Erin or Luann?
Yeah, I can speak to this. So essentially, I'll give you the information that we do have right now. So we received notification, I think I kind of provided this update during the last meeting, but we received notification that Representative Phil Lyman had proposed that the BLM and Sitla, so Sitla would be taking these lands in the town boundaries. There are three parcels that are all on the south side of the highway, and it would be for the greater land swap because Sitla is trying to remove themselves from the Bears' Years National Monument. And so the Town Council did put out a fairly lengthy message to Representative Phil Lyman and also the Director of Sitla, explaining why the Town of Bluff would be opposed to this land swap. A lot of it has to do, you know, certainly concerns about, essentially it highlighted that, you know, the Town of Bluff works really well with the BLM, and, you know, there would be concerns about potential development or a long-term lease which would indicate, or that would lead to development on these three parcels of land. And so Mayor Lepenin's request today, on behalf of the Town Council, is whether Planning and Zoning would also consider sending a letter to those two individuals, Representative Curtis and the Director of Sitla, her name is Michelle McConkey. And Mayor Lepenin expressed that, you know, it could be something just as simple as, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission is in support of the letter that was already sent. It doesn't need to be anything really big or fancy, but that is what is on the table, whether you all would consider sending something as well. And I can show you the parcels if you'd like.
Sure.
Let me find them before I share my screen real fast.
While you're looking, can I just ask, it is, in fact, part of the bone of contention is the idea that the new Bluff Trail goes through there. Is that not correct?
That has also, that did also come up in the letter, and I would, I can share with you the letter that went out as well. It's pretty lengthy, but we can definitely take a look. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with your permission, Madam Chair.
Yes.
All righty, here we go. And I'll try to describe in detail, so Ed on the phone can hear as well. For folks who want to go look at this after the fact, it's under the Resident Resources tab on our townofbluff.org website. It's the first item, and I try to post items noted during Town Council meetings. So what we're looking at here is a zoomed-in view. This is not our entire incorporated boundary by any stretch, and it's kind of funky, but these three green spots, we have one on the east side, Bluff proper, as you go out towards the Mission, and this kind of borders Highway 162, and then has a spur down to the river, which if, I feel bad even saying this for the public record, I believe this might be the turnoff to go to where the old hanging bridge was. Then the second parcel is south of 191, if you were looking at it on the map, like going east from our 00 mark, it would be at approximately 7th east, 8th east, but south, south of the highway and down to the river. And then the third parcel is kind of just south of... And then the third parcel is kind of just south of West, West Bluff on the south side of the highway. And again, kind of more down towards the river. So those are the three parcels. Hopefully I kind of, kind of represented those well enough for, for Ed. Three parcels. I don't know the total acreage or anything like that. What I can tell you is they are currently BLM and Representative Phil Lyman identified them as tradable items for this exchange.
Thanks, Erin.
Could you just repeat where they are on the website? I'm trying to get them up a little bigger. Sorry.
Oh, no, for sure. So on the town website, townofbluff.org, it's under the Resident Resources tab. So if you go up to the top or if you're on the phone and you click your menu, it's Resident Resources and then it's right at the top of the page under Items Noted During Town Council Meetings. And then the letter, the full letter is also here. I added that after it was sent and that was sent to Representative Curtis. I, I should edit this that it was also sent to Michelle McConkey. But the full letter is almost four pages long. It's over three pages long and talks about why the Town of Bluff, the town government has concerns about this trade.
Thanks, Erin. So I would propose two courses of action that we could potentially take action on tonight. The first is as a, as a commission, I like, I could, as the chair, I could write the letter and then we could approve it at our next commission meeting in April. However, my understanding is that this matter might be decided at the state legislature as soon as Friday of this week. So another course of action is that you all make a motion to approve me writing a letter on behalf of the commission endorsing the town's letter and opposing this land trade. And in that letter, I could recognize what sort of land that zone is zoned as, knowing that we don't actually have jurisdiction over it, but that that implies our wishes for that land. So between those two courses of action, either approving me to write the letter and send it this week or us reviewing the letter at the next meeting, I think those are things we could consider. Marcia, go ahead.
I, I want to support the idea of the BLM keeping this land BLM because that way it's the most amenable to open lands and keeping our trail and such. I don't want to support anything suggested that by our congressman, our state representative rather. I also, but I guess, and my, so my only hesitation, I guess, is what I'm trying to spit out here. My hesitation is just not knowing enough about which other pieces come and go as they begin to do this. Do we end up getting screwed by another piece? And so unfortunately, I think we're not going to know that anyway. I think it's just going to be happening to us rather than by us. So I'm, I'm being, I'm hemming and hawing and leaning towards making a motion for you so that we can get on with it. Maybe I'll make a motion and we'll second it and see if it works. And, and my motion is to allow Amanda to sign a letter from Planning and Zoning opposing the proposal of Sitla's switch to those lots.
I'll second.
So that would mean, Amanda, that we would be going ahead to do this in a timely way. And, and that's where I'm coming from, even though I'm still, ah, what, what's going on?
So we had a motion by Marcia, a second by Melissa. Any discussion? I, I guess I had a question for the discussion. Erin, does the town letter itself request like better consultation in like future land trades? Or does it ask like Sitla to come to, to the Town of Bluff about any other proposals?
It doesn't specifically ask that, no.
Okay, thanks. Melissa, go ahead.
Um, I, that's exactly what I'd like to ask if it's appropriate. If we included a text line or two along those lines to like encourage any of that discussion for any other land swat, swap, trade, whatever, like just make that clear that that would be ideal to be included in that instead of have it just be blindly brought upon us. I, I guess I'm offering that as, as a suggestion. Is that appropriate? Do we feel like that's appropriate? That's what I would like to see, but it's not just me, I know.
Let's go to Luanne and then Erin.
Yeah, I just, just want to clarify the third location. It starts about, it runs along the highway, both sides of the highway out towards the Mission, but it's between Bluff and the Mission and then goes south to the, goes clear to the river over there.
Thanks, Luanne. Erin, go ahead.
I was going to say, so at the, in the conclusion of the letter, it doesn't talk about future, but it says likewise, while we have had disagreements with Sitla decisions in the past, we have always strived for a positive working relationship with the Trustlands Administration based on open and honest communication. And, you know, just that we hope, we hope Sitla will consider Bluff's interests so we can continue to build on our common interests.
Okay, thanks, Erin. Marcia, go ahead.
Yeah, it, it continues that thought of the two things I think I've mentioned before. One is we have discussed with Sitla before doing things and they've worked with us. And, and I mentioned the telephone tower. That's, that was a perfect example of talking to them. The other thing is our laws are written throughout the county and the municipalities around here to say, we will in fact ask that you talk to us to do these things. What we don't get is that first step. We don't get to talk about the trades. We get to talk about it when it's, so if it's Sitland land, they would come to us and say, hey, can we put a phone tower? Or if it's BLM land, hey, can we put a trail? We don't get to say yes or no, but we get to say, oh, do you have to? So Melissa, I agree with you. It'd be great to put in there a line that says, please try and talk to us first. I just don't know that we will get it. Yeah.
I can include language encouraging those preliminary discussions. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. Ed, would, would you like to unmute?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, aye. Now I'm on a different phone. Are you still getting that reverberation you were talking about?
Let me see. Yes, we still are.
Amazing. Never had that before.
Whoa, so sorry. Okay, I'm going to mute you again if you'd like to share it right now. All right. Right. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, everybody. I will get that letter or work on that tomorrow. Next on the agenda is next steps on the RV ordinance, assignments and timing. So thanks, folks, for working on reviewing that ordinance while I was at the meeting last, or I was not at the meeting last week. I think that this, the RV ordinance is something that we know we've talked to the Town Council about. We know it's, it's a need, but I feel like it's something that we can take our time with and move slowly on. And I also recognize that in that last call, you all talked about the need for maybe clearer work assignments and potentially a special work session because every meeting we just keep sort of like punting this to the back of the line. So I have two, two potential proposals for everybody. The first, the first idea is that we, we think about what sort of issues or research needs to be done. For example, we could look at what Utah's laws are on RVs. We could look at what other towns might be doing with RVs. And we could schedule like a presentation on each of those topics at our upcoming meetings so that we could kind of tackle one learning piece at a time. And one person would be like responsible for that presentation assignment. That's one way we could do it. Another way we could do it is like each, each meeting, maybe tackle one of these topics on, on this. Just so it's more manageable. So maybe next meeting we talk about RV parking. Next we talk about RVs as dwellings. And then the third option is just like having, starting a work session at some point in the future. So I'm kind of open to y'all on those three different approaches. Marcia, go ahead.
I, 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 I think that after I read what I had written to get us started, which was just an outline and then saw Malia adding some great, you know, insights. Plus Malia sent us a couple of links to some things and then I started looking up links to other things. I would offer one more proposal. And that is that maybe a couple of us get together, pull one of these already existing RV, RV ordinances and make it ours and then use that as a template to just fix things. So, so for example, I saw one today, I can't even remember. I think it was Virgin, Virgin Utah. I don't, I don't even know the names of the towns. But Virgin Utah, so they have an RV ordinance. And some of it just was exactly what we're talking about here with us putting in the number and the thing, you know, the things we talk about. But it looked sort of ready to go. I'm not saying that's the right one. I'm just saying there is one. Uh, it said you had one of, the, the big one, one of the Salt Lake ones said, oh, you have to pave every parking space for the RVs. We wouldn't say that. So in other words, we would take something that exists and use it to plug in all these concerns we have. I don't know, maybe it's better because we'd have something done and we're working on it. Or we could use the outline we have here and go the other way. Don't know, just another suggestion.
Thanks, Marcia. It's really helpful. Any, anybody want to respond to that idea or? Go ahead, Malia.
Yeah, I like that idea because time is of the essence. And I was also looking through some like you had mentioned. And I think that it could be nice to take what they have and maybe have one and, or three or four and just kind of push them together and create what, what we wanted to say. But of course, referencing this brainstorm form so that we can make sure that we are taking into account everything that we are concerned about and want to see.
Malia, do you think it's possible that since we have the big mouth, since I have a big mouth and you seem to have jumped right in, do you think it might be possible that you and I would spend a, a couple hours one day stealing someone's RV ordinance, plugging in the word Bluff and then bringing it to this group as a sample ordinance that we could change for ours? In other words, would you like to be a team and present this?
Yeah, let's do it.
Awesome. Yay. Good.
No, you go ahead, Amanda.
I was just going to say, why don't, why don't you all let us know when you're ready to be on the agenda? If that's next meeting, that's great. We would just ask that you get us something to review by like Friday ahead, like we do with other folks. But if it needs to be in two meetings, like whatever y'all need.
I would, I would ask, Malia, you call me sometime since you're the working person, I'm not. And you call me sometime, we will set up a meeting. We will find a couple of these and see if it's something we're ready to bring forward or we need to work on a little bit. And if you're willing to do that, I'd be happy to work with you.
Awesome, yeah. Sounds good. I'll be calling.
Have your people call my people.
Yeah, for sure.
All right. Any, any further discussion from folks? Okay, we'll move on to item eight. Sorry, my cat is moving my screen. Uh, discussion about updating land use ordinance and, and the land use clearance forms. So again, I apologize for not being at the last meeting. I think I could have helped in the discussion about what are we trying to update again? But I think just to sort of restate some of the historical challenges, we, I think it was late last fall, we had concerns in reading through the land use clearance ordinance just for clarity, like being really clear. If a single family dwelling or a duplex or ADU were exempt from a site plan, we, we determined, yes, that is the case at that meeting. But I think in listening to your discussion from last week about what can we do to make the land use clearance form really clear, there might be ways to clarify that ordinance by just adding a couple more kind of check the boxes on the land use clearance form. And so I think all of you potentially brought ideas today to how to update the land use clearance form. Or maybe not, Marcia's shaking her head. So, um, but we could potentially brainstorm a list tonight and then one of us can bring edits to that land use clearance form at our next meeting. I do want to recognize also though that, as Marcia said, and I will confirm, we, we don't get a lot of complaints about the form or don't get a lot of concerns. I think it is relatively clear, but there are still ways that we could make it clear on our end, things like square footage and acreage and a couple other things. So with that, I'll open the floor to discussion. Marcia?
Yeah, the one I, the one I think of, I cannot give you an example of. However, because it's not stuck in my head this last week, I have nothing left in my head and I apologize for being out of sync. I remember thinking at some point that the land use clearance form didn't match up correctly on one or two lines with the land use clearance ordinance. So it may be that we just have to take our fingers and go down and go, or I can or something and, and just find what it was that either bugged us or I'm hanging on to somewhere where it said, person, you do this, but didn't, it didn't explain it well in the, in the ordinance or something. So it, it may be that what we're doing is trying to match this for clarity.
Thanks, Marcia. Anybody else have any thoughts on that updating the land use clearance form? Melissa?
Yeah, just a thought. I know we've sort of talked about like the forms and ordinances that we have making sense for us at present, but also in a future tense, which I know we can always like modify things in a future way when we have things like our own building inspector as an example. And I spoke about this last time. But I think about when we do review a land use clearance, let's just say for a single family dwelling, are we getting the information we need in that form? Or what is it that we're like continuing to search for in documents or continuing to ask the public for when, when they present to us? And if the answer, like if it's nothing or if it's just like, like what is the acreage of your property? If that's it, awesome, then can we just update the form? And then thinking about kind of that same sort of situation for like a larger development or, or whatever, like a subdivision or something, right? Like what questions are we continuing to ask people? And how can we just like quickly have them into the land use clearance form, which means the person theoretically has already spent some time coming up with that answer? So just highlight that. I'm not saying that those are big issues. I'm just saying, are there ways to just make that easier for a couple of us?
It's a really good way to frame it. Melissa, what, what are we continuing to search for that may not be in the form? I was going to scroll down and show you all a couple ideas I had. The first being, I think we should clarify in this square footage request, if it's like, if it's a remodel, what's the square footage of the whole building? What's the square footage of the proposed remodel? If it's an addition, what's the original building? What's the addition? I think we can add more specificity there. I think we can also add acreage.
And the, and the word existing, existing building, adding building, adding on building. Yeah, good, good catch, Amanda.
And then, uh, this is a tiny pet peeve of mine. Here we have this checklist. I think we should specify who fills out the checklist. Because I, in my mind, our intention was to have the property owner fill out the checklist, but some people leave it blank, I think, thinking Planning and Zoning will fill it out. So I just want to clarify, please fill out this checklist or put in a. And then I have a couple ideas as to how to align it with the land use clearance ordinance that I could like put in a, like a do like in a suggested form. and then I have a couple ideas as to how to align it with the land use clearance ordinance that I could like put in a, like I could do like in a suggested form.
I was gonna, can you Google Doc, can you Google Doc this suggested? Like you were saying, that would be ideal and then we could go over it. Yeah. Those are good catches, Amanda.
So how about, oh, Erin, go ahead.
I'm so sorry. One of the things that drives me crazy when I handle your physical paperwork is that last page. There's, I mean, you're, you're gonna write the land use clearance number, but it doesn't have the applicant's name. And so when I'm putting papers back together, I'd love to have the applicant's name on honestly, all of those pieces of paper if possible.
Great.
Thanks.
No, thank you, Erin.
Oh, sure. Just a town manager thing, really.
You know how we are.
I have one more and I'm just trying to look at the document to make sure that I'm correct in saying this. Um, and maybe it's just somewhere I'm not seeing it, but I feel like we should also have like the physical address to the extent that it's available or a plus code or something. So it's easier to reference um, what property people are talking about. For instance, I think there's a part where it's like legal description. I think we should keep that because that's a technicality. I think that matters. But like if someone writes in there like parcel numbers, zeros, zero, whatever, insert 16 numbers, like unless I have access to the database, I don't really know how to search that. Um, so I guess I'm asking, can we turn that into some kind of like, um, like a physical property address or a plus code, something that's easier to reference? Or, or maybe have two fields, keep both of those, or keep the original legal description and then add a, um, this box.
Sounds good.
And that, that would help too, Melissa, with the site review, onsite reviews. I mean, I, we've talked about this, that, that we are allowed to go take a walk there. And sometimes we actually should go take a walk there when these are, you know, um, when there's a little lot and how much you're gonna fit on it. Well, wait a minute, we should go see where it's sitting on the ground. So that may help to have um, better property location to stuff. Yep.
Okay, so for our next meeting, in advance of our next meeting, I will send out the Planning and Zoning LUC form as a Google Doc. We'll all weigh in and potentially vote to approve the changes at next, our next meeting in April. Or March. I keep.
Yeah, March. We have March 15th.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's been a busy, big day. Um, okay, any further discussion on this?
I do just have one thing.
Go ahead.
I feel like on the few that I've looked at, current zone is never filled in. And so I don't know if that's something that we need to make sure that people are filling that in or have things that are listed as like, you have to put something on this one or like stars for required or not required or something.
Well, technically the whole form is required, so you're right. When, but, but one of the things, Malia, maybe just that they get confused. And sometimes they'll bring it to us and they'll say, I didn't know it. So we may be able to help.
Yeah, maybe we could put the URL to the map website.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Um, I'm gonna move us on to renewable energy discussion. Um, something that we've been noting that we don't actually have any places in town where renewable energy might be, um, might be zoned. Um, before we get into the like how or what that looks like, um, I wanted to see what y'all think about first going to the town council with this question because I don't want us to, you know, invest 20 hours, say, in drafting a zoning ordinance and then the town council says, no, like, or that's not what we're thinking. So, um, that's my suggestion is that we get on their next agenda or when it's appropriate, ask them. I'm seeing a lot of vigorous head nodding.
Absolutely, Amanda. It's, it's the most appropriate question and it's something we've talked about many times. What is our job? What is their job? And the town council's job is to say, we look forward to renewable energy in Bluff. Where can we put it? And then assign it to Planning and Zoning to look at some ways to put it somewhere. So I'm totally in agreement.
So my question for y'all, um, because I'd be happy to represent P and Z to the town council at a future meeting when it's appropriate, Erin. Um, is, um, maybe we, we want a motion to like indicate what I should say, but I'm assuming what I propose is I would say that we are supportive of zoning certain areas of town for renewable energy development. And we're asking for the town as to how to proceed. Does that sound good?
It doesn't. I'm not sure that you necessarily need a motion as a general discussion idea. You know, a motion will come when we say, um, this is where we think we should go. Um, but I think you're free to just have a general discussion with them, no problem.
But generally, I'm saying we would like to zone it, not that we would like excluding it, right?
Well, um, general consensus seems to be without a, because if we give you a motion that we want it and then the town says, yeah, but only on Main Street, then we might not want, want it. So I, I don't want to vote for wanting it. I want to vote for supporting the, the possible development.
Okay. And of course, all this would have to go to public hearing and everything.
Oh, of course.
Melissa, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was gonna sort of extend from Marcia and just um, like, just in support of like having that discussion, like bringing that to the town council, like in a general way, like not trying to tell them one way or the other, but just saying, you know, kind of get their approval to continue with the process of creating something on our end.
Great. Okay. All right, we will, I will go forward with that. Erin, should I email Mayor Leffin to ask, make this request?
Yes, um, and if you wouldn't mind also see, seeing me, I would very much appreciate it.
Okay. Okay. Let me just make a note. Okay, I think that brings us to our second to last item on the agenda, which is items for next agenda. Um, what, we may have RVs depending whether or not Malia and Marcia are ready to present. We'll have an update on energy discussion. Um, what else would folks like to see on our next meeting's agenda? Melissa, go ahead.
I'd like to just inquire the possibility of someone filling this issue that I have, like where we, kind of agreed to do quarterly things. So just checking in, um, I'm not trying to ask for more. I'm just asking where we're at with that. So just to check in with.
Answer that. Okay. Thanks, Melissa.
I have an item.
Go ahead, Ed.
Why is the only male on the commission reverberating?
Good question. Wish I could make a witty, I can't think of. Would you like any other topics on?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, not quite yet, but, um, any other items?
Amanda, could I make a request to do an update for strategic planning from the town's perspective?
Yep. Okay. All right. Oh, then we can move on to item 11, which is, anybody have any others?
I have another. Um, I, I think I emailed P and Z that I won't be available to take minutes on the 15th. I don't want to leave you guys wondering and hanging loose, but I will be out of town.
Okay, thanks for letting us know. We'll, um, we will make arrangements otherwise and hope that you're up to something fun.
Yes, thanks.
Thanks for letting us know.
In that case, in that case, you're not excused unless you take all of us with you.
That would be even more fun.
All right. Any other item, items of discussion? All right, Ed, if you'd like to entertain your motion again, feel free to unmute. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. All right. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of the, say aye.
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 Aye, 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 aye.
Motion passing at 7:01. Thank you so much, folks, for this evening.
Thanks, everybody.
Good to see you guys.